Good evening and welcome to tonight's Homewood City Council Meeting, June 11th, We will begin tonight with our invocation from Dr. Bill Johnston from Dawson Memorial Baptist Church.
Thank you so much. Let us pray. Fathers, we gather tonight with zoning issues here in Homewood to all the way to Singapore with dealing with a demilitarized zone in Korea. There's just a lot of issues that we depend upon our government leaders to be used of you with wisdom and with decisions, and we just pray for them. I thank you for these in this room, for their work, and we pray your blessings upon them. And I pray for those who seek to have their voice heard tonight, to do it with grace, and that everything be done in order. We thank you for your gifts, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. White? What allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Johnston. We'll begin with roll call. Robert?
Mr. Walton?
Here.
Mr. Tames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wulderson?
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
All right, so I'll be sitting in for Mr. Limbaugh today. I entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes from our special called council meeting from May 23rd, 2018.
Second.
By Mr. Walton, and second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That stands approved. All right, forward vacancies. We have an at-large opening for Arts Council. You guys, I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but I don't know if we want to open it?
Yeah, sure.
How long?
It's 30 days, okay? Yeah, 30 days.
Okay. Robert, you okay? We're going to open up the Arts Council at-large opening for 30 days. All right, now, Robert, I need to ask you about this one, too. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals Application, that is something that comes before us?
Yes, sir. It's only about council. It's under the construction code. It's not the Board of Zoning Adjustment. It's Board of Adjustment Appeals because of construction issues.
Okay.
International building code, is that right?
Yes, sir.
They changed names after I came through.
Okay.
Construction has to be a person who is qualified by some profession. Each year, it has specific obligations.
All right, and do we open this for a period of time and receive additional applications? Or are we receiving one application and acting on one application?
I'm sorry, I know nothing about it more than what I just said.
Okay, all right. All right, well, we have an application of Joy Beth Smith for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Yeah, Mr. Jones, maybe you've dealt with this before. I don't think I've ever dealt with one of these before since I've been here.
Well, yeah, we have before, but I was just going to ask, when did we open the period for that position? I mean, if so, we just need to determine what the closing is. I'm not...
He also determines she makes the qualification.
Right, we have to...
Tell him, prove that she does it, and I'm not saying...
Right.
But they are a special qualification for his board. Some...
It's not saying that we ever opened the position on the list that I have here. It's just saying that on the Board of Adjustment Appeals, there are current vacancies. But I don't have any reference to it.
Well, then, since we have an application, why don't we set an ending date? Does it sound okay? Why don't we do a 30-day ending date for...
Why don't I have some...
Is that...
May I?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wyatt?
I'm sorry, I didn't come prepared to talk about Joy Beth Smith tonight, but she did submit to me a resume along with a cover letter. She's an attorney. She actually works with the International Code Council here in town. She's highly qualified, and I've known her for a while, so I encouraged her to apply for the position because it was open. There's several openings, so that's all I wanted to just fill in.
Explanation helpful. And with that, it sounds like we have a qualified... I don't know if you guys want to do 30-day, keep it open for another 30 days, if that's okay. We'll keep it open for another 30 days, and if there's other applicants, fine. If not, we'll consider Joy Beth Smith for that position at that time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Walton.
Can you clarify, does anybody know if these positions are by ward or if they're all at large?
The Board of Adjustments are at-large positions. There are seven at-large positions. That particular one is at-large.
All right, any further questions?
I had one, Mr. Chairman, and I may have just missed it. Did we get a copy of her resume? Did you?
No, we haven't received. We haven't received.
If you could forward that to us, that would be helpful, too.
I will. I'm sorry. I didn't want to be talking. I wasn't able to understand. Thank you.
I have a question as well. Yeah, Mr. McCloskey?
Robert, did you say there were multiple positions or just one?
The list that I have, and this was recently printed. It was printed last Thursday. It says that on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, there's currently seven vacancies. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's seven terms that expired. I've actually reached out to all those expired members, and five of them have indicated that they will continue serving because we do have a case right now that we still have. So we do have a forum now. I was hoping that possibly Joy Beth Smith may get on there and we have a full board, but we might do with five.
Okay. All right, any further questions? Okay, so we'll keep that open for 30 days and then take up the applications at that point. All right, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and it looks like with regard to the agenda, we have a couple of items to add to our new business agenda. Item number 200618, which is a going request to amend fiscal year 2017, 2018 insurance fund budget coming to us from Mr. Burgett. And also amending our new business agenda item 200718, which is a request for the mayor to execute a contract for a project for the Patriot Park Connector Project. And so we will add those two items to our new business agenda.
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Wouldn't it be 210618?
Robert, is this a 20...
We've got 200618 is for the budget amendment, and 200718 is for the state farm.
200718.
Why would it be 2007? Wouldn't it be 2106? We're in the... All the sixes are consistent with...
Yes, 2106.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so 210618 will be the additional added item, request for the mayor to execute a contract for the Patriot Park Connector Project. And so with those changes, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
By Mr. Higginbotham?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wyatt. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, budget stands approved as amended. All right, so let's get into... We don't have any items in our consent agenda tonight. Old business agenda, first item is 060418, which is a request for consideration for permission to work in the city right-of-way at 1012, 1014, and 1018 Grace Street, coming to us from Mike Morrow and Greg Cobb of the BEZ. And this coming through special issues, so we need a report from the special issues.
This actually was in our special issues meeting on May 7th, and we met and voted five to zero to refer this item back to the full council without a recommendation at the time because Greg was going to have a meeting following our meeting to talk about the retaining wall on the street. So we made the recommendation to send it out without recommendation pending that meeting that they were going to have. So that motion was made by Mr. McCloskey and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham with a five to zero vote.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. And, Mr. Cobb, can you elaborate?
Yes, sir. Ms. Mar and I met with representatives from the school because at the time, we were concerned that the footer of the retaining wall would be on school property. He has since had a new survey done that shows the right-of-way to be 30 feet wide as opposed to what we had was 20.
That's right.
Sure, we had a 20-foot right-of-way, but the survey here shows it to be 30-foot. So now there's no issue about getting onto the school board property. That's what we really held up on, that not the wall, but the footer to the wall would have been on school board property. So now with this survey, he's able to build it and stay totally within our right-of-way. And to refresh everybody's memory, it's been over a month, is that pushing that road forward to build the next few houses on the street, that's required by the fire department to have access where they can bring their truck in there and adequately serve those houses. So he's ready to build us a road to our standards.
Satisfied, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Cobb, can you clarify, does that road have to have the ability for the fire agent to turn around?
No, sir.
No?
They have a certain depth that they'll go in for the turnaround. I think it's 200 feet, something like that. Maybe it's 150, remember?
It's actually 150.
150, okay.
And that the fourth house would need to be sprinkled, and that's a part of the previous approvals for that fourth lot.
Okay. All right, any further questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Tames, seconded by Mr. Walton. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that stands approved, Resolution 1875. Is that right, Mr. Kendrick? All right, next item is 140518, which is a public hearing tonight for consideration of a variance to signed ordinance at 2821 Central Avenue from Joshua Gentry and Greg Cobb. And also coming through special issues, we'll start with a report from special issues. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, we met... This was actually in our meeting on May 23rd, and we vote five to zero to send this item back out to full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. And the motion was made on Ms. Andrus, seconded by Mr. Walton, and voted five to zero to have that public hearing tonight and make a decision.
All right, with that, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing tonight and for comments from the public. And, Mr. Cobb, we'll begin with you, and I guess it's Mr. Gentry, yes?
Yes, this is a size variance for the little donkey sign that's up on the roof of the building. It's 80 square feet or... Okay, what we got?
So current is 87 and a half. New one would be 80 square feet. So three signs total, one on Central, one on Reese, and then one on the pole.
The poles are refaced. The other two signs are, like I say, the sign that's going up there is smaller than the existing by seven square feet.
So the variance is the number of signs?
And size.
In size, gotcha.
And the fact it's located above the roof line.
Above the roof line, yes, sir, that's correct. The other one was there also, I should have mentioned that, but they're not supposed to be both. Actually, what that is, is hiding the AC units, I understand.
Yeah.
It's basically like a parapet wall on the roof of this building.
All right, do we have any versions to look at?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Mr. Kendrick, you got a copy from last time? Okay. Okay.
What are you going to do with the old donkey on the pole?
Actually, he stays. We're just going to cover him up.
Oh. Because it's a reface.
Okay, all right.
You want to put it in your backyard? Yeah, do something cool with it.
He stole my agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, and I don't know, Mr. Gentry, if you have any other comments you want to say about the need for the new signs and make sure we hear from the public on it?
I'm good.
Anything?
Basically, I'll give a little bit more information. They're rebranding, so it's not necessarily... It's just their new logos that they had created.
I want to change my logo out and...
Okay.
Bring a little color.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone else here to speak in favor of or against this project. All right, seeing anyone, I'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing. And council, I'll turn it over to you guys for questions and discussion.
I would move to approve.
All right, we have a move to approve by Mrs. Smith. I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCloskey. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there you go. Stands approved. That's going to be Resolution 1876. Excuse me. Next item is 170518, which is a public hearing tonight to consider declaring the property located at 1117 Hardwick Lane a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. And this also coming through special issues, we'll begin with a report from Mrs. Smith.
I think you want to talk to him.
Oh, this did not come through special issues?
No.
Oh. Excuse me. All right. I'm looking at my cheat sheet. All right, Greg, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Someone's going to have here before I open the public hearing.
The owner is Nicole Johnson at the same address as where the tax notice goes, 1117 Hardwick Lane. Certified letters were mailed out, and the property posted on April the 12th informing the owner of the excessive growth violation and giving till April 24th to abate or be subject to a public hearing. Ms. Johnson failed to make the April 24th deadline, therefore, a public hearing was scheduled for tonight, June the 11th. Another certified letter was mailed to Ms. Johnson on May 20th informing her of the date and time of the public hearing. Of the two certified letters mailed out, both were returned undelivered. It appears that Ms. Johnson is currently not residing at this address. Last week, Ms. Johnson called Mr. Wyatt Pugh telling him that someone called her letting her know that the yellow sign was posted in her yard. She wanted to know what was it was all about, and Mr. Pugh called me, and I informed him what the process was. Mr. Pugh returned the call to Ms. Johnson and informed her what needed to be done, and she implied that she would have that taken care of as of today, and apparently it got done over the weekend. So as of right now, the excessive growth violation is no longer there.
All right, so if the excessive growth violation is no longer there, there's no longer a need for a public hearing. Still got to have the public hearing? Okay, well, let me open the public hearing. I'll ask the public hearing, anyone here to speak in favor or against this item? Seeing no one to speak in favor against the item, I will close the public hearing.
Move to drop.
And comments from the council, move to drop by Mr. McCloskey, seconded by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So item 170518 is dropped. Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, next item, 290518, which is a public hearing tonight for consideration of a variance to signed ordinance at 285 Palisades Boulevard. And I have this report coming through special issues. Yes, it is. And so we'll begin with a report from Mrs. Smith.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted four to zero to send this out tonight to the council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Ms. Andrus, seconded by Mr. Higginbotham. It was a four to zero vote.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith. I'm going to go ahead and just open the public hearing on this. And, Mr. Cobb, if you want to begin on the signed ordinance, and then we'll...
Yes, sir, this is a sign that sit inside the old wagon, Buddy Wade Building.
Oh, yeah, okay. Need you to elaborate. I wasn't at the committee meeting, so...
Oh, he put it on the ground. There it is. He just did that.
Yeah, I put it on the ground to show the level of exposure that it gets, or lack of exposure it gets while it's on the ground. Being raised up on the wagon, it's good for business, drives business into my office. Being a new agent, I need all the business I can get.
Give me your name.
My name is Franki Bledo. I own the State Farm Agency there off of Palisades Boulevard.
All right, and so what is exactly the variance here?
Well, if it stays in the wagon, it would be a height and an area variance, both, because it's... Right now, it meets our ordinance, needs no variance other than it's got to go all the way to ground. It can't be sitting on those legs. And that would be fine, but when you put it in the wagon, because the way we measure things, it gets too tall and too wide.
The wagon needs a variance?
Yes, sir. Now, the sign is everything in total, so we measure the width of the wagon and the height of it and come up with a really big number.
All right. I don't know if you have any further comments you want to make about it?
It just gives great exposure to the building. People can drive by, they can see it on the road. It gives exposure from both sides, whether you're coming onto Palisades or leaving Palisades, going towards Green Springs. And it's a great landmark. I can tell people, look for the sign inside the wagon, and they know exactly where I'm at.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of or against this item? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that. And comments from council, questions, discussion? Yeah, Mr. Higginbotham?
So I believe that you said at committee, this is 30 feet back from the street, is that correct?
31, yes, sir.
31 feet back from the street. Mr. Cobb, I mean, how close could the sign, if it were just a sign, be to the street and be within our...
There's not a set number for that. I would have to go out and look for the sight distance on it. Being as how that's a divided road, I don't think it'd be a sight distant issue. It could be just inside its property line. You're not making a left out of there because it's a signalized intersection, so traffic coming up Columbiana Road wouldn't have to deal with it.
So the sign itself could be significantly closer to the street than 31 feet?
Yes, sir, but the land falls off, and the road, it falls down.
The road is above it?
The road is above it, yes, sir. So the closer you get to the road, the less visibility you actually get. If you see where that grass cut line is, it would... Yes, the hill would hide it. I mean, it could go to the corner, maybe about, rather than from the building, and the only way you'd ever see it is bring it to the corner of Columbiana Road.
Okay. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes, are there any other signs like that one either on the building or facing whatever other road that's going between you and the cleaners?
No, sir, sir, there's no sign on Columbiana.
On Columbiana, okay.
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I was the one that kind of asked about the being on the ground. It just... It looks so non-permanent, you know, like the wind would blow it over. What we're trying to convey there, and Mr. Wade never really had a sign other than, you know, it's got the Wade Building on the side of the building there. We're just looking... I mean, what we're trying to convey, I guess, are more monument-type signs, signs that just, I don't know, it just looks... It just... Yeah, it just doesn't look permanent. It looks cluttered with the wagon. That's why I was looking for maybe some creativity as opposed to just putting it on the ground, which would be within our signed ordinance, but I don't know, those are my concerns. If there's some way we could put it on the building, you would have great exposure, and it would look more permanent on the building.
Right. At this time, I would love to put it on the building, but just due to opening up a brand-new business, I'm really stretched for money. So putting it on the wagon was the cheapest way to gain exposure at that corner.
Mrs. Smith?
Greg, this question's for you. So if he put the sign on the corner, I say, is it a two-sided sign?
No, ma'am.
It's just the one side, okay. If it went up to the corner, but it would have to be in the ground, right?
Yes, ma'am. It's got to be permanently attached to the ground. The wind won't blow it over if it goes...
Right, no, right.
Permanently attached to the ground, all the way to the ground.
Okay.
And if it were to go on the buildings by some way, he would need a variance for two signs on the building because it's Buddy Wade Building is a sign.
Oh.
I think Buddy had a State Farm sign up there with a phone number on it.
But he didn't have that Buddy Wade.
No, that wasn't there. It said State Farm and had phone number.
Sorry, question? Yeah. So inside the wagon, is that considered permanent, permanently in the ground, though? I mean, that's a structure that's movable, correct?
No, I think that wagon's anchored down, isn't it?
It's anchored down into the ground. It has braces that are attached to the wheels.
Is the Buddy Wade Building in compliance?
Jury's out on that one. I really honestly don't know. We don't have a permit on it, so from that standpoint, no. I don't know the exact dimensions of it yet. I'll have to address that with this way.
So we have two signs that were put up that we don't know anything about that were...
It just appeared.
I understand. I'm just trying to help out a new State Farm agent here that needs exposure, and it just doesn't... I don't know, I just don't... I don't... I just don't like the way it's set up there. So I don't have an answer, but I think we need to do more research personally.
Well, this sign could actually, if you took Buddy Wade Building down and stuck that sign on the building, it would be all being compliant.
Right, exactly. That's the point I'm making, right, is that...
But I've not spoken to Miss Wade about doing that.
If you have some way to work with Miss Cindy about that, maybe you could have it, and it would look professional, you know? And I know you're leasing the building, but if there's some way that you could convey that, that's where you'd have the most visibility, in my opinion, but...
Well, and I think, I appreciate you raising that point. I think I would like to be clear on other signs, and it may be worth that additional research, Greg, before we act on this, that we can be clear on all the signage on the property so that we won't do this in a vacuum.
If you'd like to continue the public hearing and let us address those other issues, in the meantime, where would you like this sign to be?
I would... It would be my vote, just for now, until we get everything ironed out, for you to keep it on the ground. That would be my vote, personally.
Well, we're talking about for a two-week period here until we can act on it.
Right, I just didn't...
As far as...
I was just trying to get a feel of what you wish for us to do in the next two weeks.
Okay. Well, I don't know if we need to take action on that tonight or not. I mean, we're hearing...
Well, that's enough.
Okay.
That's enough, that's enough for me.
All right, I would think the status quo would be where it is now. All right, so I think without that, without objection or any further questions, we will just continue this public hearing, and we'll take up the matter at our next council meeting when this item will come back up, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And Robert probably knows better than I do. Did we not close the public hearing before the council started asking questions?
Yes.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
2626.
Okay, so we need to reopen.
You're right, you're right.
Well, but we can...
Well, but we can, but the public hearing's already been had, we can just carry over the decisions.
Would you carry over the item? Carry over the item?
Sure. I'm just going to leave the public hearing open.
No, you're right, I did say carry over the public hearing, really I'm carrying over the item. So, we'll carry over, without the public hearing, it's already been opened and closed, 2905-18, until our next council meeting, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item will be a public hearing, which is going to be set for June 25th, 2018, consideration for reduction of speed bumps on Bear Road, coming from Patrick McCluskey, and we'll take that up on June 25th. Next item, 1401-18, which is a request for consideration of lighting for the 500 block of Windsor Drive, coming to us from Arpan Padell and Jennifer Andrus, and coming through Finance and a report from our Finance Committee. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on June the 4th, and after much discussion, voted five to zero to recommend funding $10,805 for the wood poles and the annual expense for the lighting, $585.12, moved by you, Mr. Wright, and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, so five to zero coming out of Finance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Any further questions or discussion about that item? All right, so it's coming out of Finance, I'll entertain a, coming out of Finance for approval, so I'll entertain a second.
Second.
By Mr. Thames. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, 1401-18 stands approved, it's Resolution 18-77, I think. 2805-18, next item, request for consideration to become an official fan guide sponsor for the December 22nd, 2018 Annual Birmingham Bowl, coming from Mark Meadows and Barry Smith, and through Finance Committee, and a report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you to Mrs. Smith for coordinating this again this year, five to zero to recommending funding, $1,000 from the advertising line item, that's budgeted, so that's a five to zero coming out of Finance.
All right, thank you for that. Any further questions, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, 2805-18 is approved, and that's going to be Resolution 18-78. Next item, 1105-18, request for consideration of approval of supplement number two on the Oxmore Road project, from Greg Cobb and the BEZ, and also coming through Finance, we'll get a report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, voted five to zero to recommend funding $32,749 from capital, I believe that's Capital Projects Fund, so five to zero coming out of Finance.
All right, Mr. Cobb, and if there's anything you want to elaborate on this?
Yes, sir, this was additional work required by the DOT to redo some of the environmental documents due to time drag on the project. They sent to the DOT their man-hours and rates, and DOT adjusted it to what they accepted, and so now it's here for you.
Okay. All right, any discussion questions? We have approval coming out of Finance Committee, I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, item 1105-18 is approved, that's going to be Resolution 18-79. Next item, 0304-18, which is a request for consideration to complete crosswalks at Ponceana and Bonita, coming from Kelly Winslet and Jennifer Andrus, and this one actually went through Public Safety Committees, we'll get a report from Mr. McCluskey.
Actually, Mr. Thames handled.
Oh, Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir.
The committee in my absence.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, the committee met, voted three to zero to recommend the completion of the crosswalks at Ponceana and Bonita. Motion was made by Mrs. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Wolverton.
Mr. Thames, actually, we are just going across Ponceana, so we're not going to cross, we're not going to complete across Bonita, so we're just doing the south part of Ponceana.
There you go.
South of Ponceana.
That's right.
South part of Ponceana. All right, so this is a, it's like an ordinance, so Mike, we need a first reading on this one?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to provide the installation of the district crosswalk across Ponceana, rather than the southern intersection of the Bonita Drive. Here are any that's given places directed to install a crosswalk across Ponceana Drive on the south side of the intersection of Ponceana Drive and Bonita Drive, direct to the, to the all of our, and one of these was on the highway code, you know, the test is located, and then the crosswalk at the behind here above, any person down, felt to the violation, just wanted to show the plans that's provided, ordinance section six, six, excuse me, six, section one dash eight of the code of ordinances, section four, all of our ordinance, crosswalks, contracts, they are repealed, section, having important provisions, this order is prepared, again, constitution invalid, according to counter of jurisdiction, such ownership, affecting other crosswalks, provisions, and therefore, section six, provision, ordinance shall be completed, unless adopted, notice, counter of law, mayor, was otherwise, coming along.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. So, I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. McCluskey, seconded by Mr. Waltony, and roll call vote, Mr. Robert.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
All right, so that unanimous consent is approved, and I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
By Mr. McCluskey.
Second.
Second by Miss Andrus, and another roll call vote, Robert?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
All right, so that ordinance stands approved, and that's ordinance number 2700, if I have that right. All right, next item?
President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
Just point of, we, the people are in absence, absent, or I guess, we just, what was the vote?
It's nine to zero.
Nine to zero, okay, thank you.
Nine to zero, there's two not here.
Yes, thanks.
All right, next item is 0205-18, which is a request for consideration of a stop sign on Woodford Drive at 16th Terrace, coming from Brett Thames, and also through Public Safety, and I guess it's coming through Mr. Thames as chairman of the Public Safety Committee for that night. Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir, the committee met and voted three to zero to recommend approval of a three-way stop at Woodford Drive and 16th Terrace. Motion was made by Miss Andrus and seconded by Mr. Wolverton.
Thank you, sir, and another, is this an ordinance?
Yes, there's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and provide penalties therefor, be ordained by the city as follows. Every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle in eastern direction on along Woodford shall cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Woodford Drive with a westly right-of-way line of 16th Terrace. Section two, the any person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle on the westly direction along Woodford Drive shall cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Woodford Drive with a eastly right-of-way of 16th Terrace. Section three, that every person operating a motor vehicle on along 16th Terrace shall come to complete stop intersection of 16th Terrace with a southerly right-of-way line of Woodford Drive. Section four, the violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the code of ordinances. Section five, the chief of police shall be caused, shall erect or cause to be erected lines marking proper parking, no parking stop signs at intersections described in sections one dash three above. Section six, the ordinance shall become effective merely upon adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick, I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
By Mr. Thames, seconded by Mrs. Smith, and roll call vote, Robert?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
All right, so that unanimous consent by nine-o vote, and entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
By Mr. Waltony, seconded by Mr. Thames, and roll call vote, Robert?
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
All right, so that is approved by nine-o vote as well, and that's ordinance number 2701. Next item, 0405-18, request for consideration of making seminal drive between Manhattan Street and Oxmore Road a permanent one-way street, coming from Andy Waltony, and also through Public Safety, and another report from Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir, the committee, committee met, and after considering a traffic study presented by Mr. Hamblin, voted three to zero to recommend a one-way heading south towards Oxmore with no parking on the western side. Motion was made by Mrs. Andrus, seconded by Mr. Wolverton.
And thank you, Mr. Thames, and another first reading. Is this an ordinance, Mike, for 0405-18?
Is this seminal drive?
Simmel drive, yes.
It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and provide penalties therefor. Every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle on along Simmel Drive between intersection of Simmel Drive and Manhattan and Simmel Drive and Oxmore Road shall travel in a southerly direction only. Section two, there being lawful any person, firm, or corporation to park a motor vehicle as defined by the highway code on along the west side of Simmel Drive in the city. Section three, that the violation of this, any section of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the code of ordinances. Section four, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected marking signs as provided by section one dash two above. Section five, that the ordinance shall become effective merely upon adoption by the city council or approval by the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick, I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent on this item.
So moved.
By Miss Andrus, seconded by Mrs. Smith, and roll call vote, Mr. Robert?
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
All right, so unanimous consent is approved by nine-o vote, and entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
By Mr. Waltony, seconded by Mr. Thames, and roll call vote, Robert?
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
And that motion's approved by nine-o vote as well, and the ordinance is approved, and it's ordinance 2702. Next item, 2205-18, which is a request for consideration of an ABC Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Menu Box Three LLC, doing business as Oxmore Bar and Grill, located at 162 West Oxmore Road, coming from our city clerk, and also through Public Safety, and a report from Public Safety, Mr. Thames.
Committee voted three to zero, having no objections to the issuance of the license. Motion was made by Mrs. Andrus, seconded by Mr. Wolverton.
All right, so coming out of committee with a favorable vote, I would entertain a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Waltony. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, 2205-18 stands approved. Next item, 1305-18, which is a request for permission to work in the right-of-way and adjacent property grading at 908 Highland Road, coming from Chuck Van and Greg Cobb with the BEZ, and through Special Issues Committee, and we get a report from Special Issues, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, committee heard from the contractors last week, and we met and voted to send this out to Committee Four to Zero pending the improper, sorry, improper, the proper indemnification agreements be signed, and they had a meeting out there on the property, and I think we might have some more information coming from that meeting.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Cobb, if you want to give us an update on where we stand on this project?
Yes, sir, they've looked at the property again. We met in the previous, in the meeting, actually, it wasn't a meeting, we had discussion before this meeting started, they've come up with an alternative, and I'll let you explain what your alternative is. I don't have a problem with it if the council does not have a problem with it.
So, what we propose doing is, just kind of backtracking a little bit, is I think this came out of discussion from an offer we made to, you know, I guess, touch up a little bit of the property beside us that's on the Sims property, which is city-owned property. It kind of turned into, I guess, an issue of concerns about water that gets on the Sims property. We went out there this week, it looks like all the water that we see comes from a property that is behind. There's a, there's a, an alley behind our property.
Unimproved alley.
Unimproved, yeah.
Yeah.
Abandoned was the word I was going to use, and I did, that wasn't right.
It's been improved.
Yes, and so the house that's behind there, their water is piped out into the alley. It's really not directed at our property, it actually looks like it funnels straight to the Sims property. So, what we're proposing to hopefully help that situation was just connect the pipe up across that, so we'll have to cross the alley, connect a pipe, trench it in the ground, and we'll just take it down to our property line to help get the water problem on the Sims property solved. Our property, we, you know, as its landscaping has done and all, I mean, we don't, I don't see where we've increased, and I think we've decreased any water problems that would be on the Sims property, just by virtue of what we're doing naturally anyway. So, we proposed to really not even have to get on the Sims property, I don't think, we just have to cross the city's right-of-way, I guess, in the unimproved alley, and put a pipe in the ground, take it out, we'll take it out beside the house that's under construction, and it'll daylight out, you know, at some point.
At the curb line.
At the curb, or there's no curb there.
There's not?
No, it's just somewhere in there, off, I guess, before we cross the right-of-way in the front of the property, be off of ours. That's a curbless street, if I recall.
I thought it had a short one, it was grown up, but okay. You didn't give them your name for the record.
Oh, Jason Hale.
Jason, okay.
Yes. So, we felt like that addressed any concerns there were on water, and really us trying to stay off the Sims property on that side, and...
Okay, so, so Greg, you're okay with proceeding with this, with that condition of addressing some of those other water problems?
Yes, sir. The original request, they were going to be working on the Sims property, which is what brought us here, and we asked them to try to take some water that's not coming from them, coming from above them, that while you're working there, how about help us out and take it to the street? And so, he's agreed to put this in at his cost in our right-of-way. It may not make it perfect, but it's going to take a lot of water off of the Sims property by directing it, it all ends up in the street eventually anyway, so that's not any problem, but it's going at an angle hitting the back of the Sims house right now, and we're going to divert a lot of that and take it straight on down the street.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a win-win for the city, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further questions, discussion?[1619.32] Mrs. Smith?
I just have one quick question. So now, I guess, this actually, we're not, we're permitting work in the right-of-way, but it's a different right-of-way than we were discussing previously, so now we're allowing y'all to work in the right-of-way in the alley, unimproved alley, as opposed to on the Sims property. Do we need to, I guess, make a note of that, and that, I guess that'll just show up in the indemnification agreement?
What it says is grading pursuits or plans approved by the building engineers only.
Okay, okay.
I think it's covered whatever grid.
With that, okay, perfect.
If you're comfortable with that.
No, that's good.
I would just add, let's just make sure that, that you and Greg get together and agree that the appropriate size pipe to handle whatever volume of water is, and then just, y'all get on the same page as to where it daylights. Sounds like there's a little confusion there. It looks like there, at one point, your right was a curb, but there's only about this much of it left.
That's what I thought was there, it was very little.
So if you guys could just come to an agreement on how and where it daylights ahead of time.
And I believe it's a six-inch pipe coming out of the property behind us, I mean.
See, it's like a six-inch corrugated pipe, like you're using a field drain.
All right, any further questions? All right, this came out of committee with a favorable vote, but I'm going to go and ask for a motion.
I do have one more. Oh, no, that's not this one.
Out of four oh.
No.
But I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion for approval with this one, since it's so different.
I do have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Andrus.
Greg, are you going to have to install an inlet to connect the pipe to?
No, ma'am, this, all that, all that currently goes down to the street, and it runs what should be a curb line, down towards, back to the east, I can't think of the next street, St. Charles, St. Charles, that's where it goes right now. It's currently going there anyway, so it's, it's really, you know, I think we're doing the best we can do with what we got, and we're getting some of the water off the Sims property that's always been dumped in there. The Sims property has a couple of bio swells in it where they've tried to handle some water in some other ways. We've had some washing issues over the past, and when new homes go in, you got more rooftops, more driveways, so. But even the property behind us did make an effort to cut it off the, off of the Sims property by carrying it to the south where it used to go straight east, so they changed it somewhat, and they helped one area, but it didn't help the other. We spent quite a bit of time over there a few weeks ago looking at it and all over the property.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Again, I will entertain a motion for approval first.
Seven.
By Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Walton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And again, for the record, that was the motion based on the conditions that were discussed today.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so thirteen oh five stands approved, that's going to be resolution eighteen, eighteen eighty, thank you. All right, next item, thirteen, whoops, excuse me, next item is going to be a committee referral agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval of our committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Higginbotham, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote.
Excuse me, before we vote, Mr. Higginbotham?
I, I do have a question that's germane to one of these items.
Sure.
I need to, two, two requests that I wanted to make prior to committee. First, I wanted to ask that if we could go ahead and get a copy of the proposed stormwater management ordinance tomorrow, and that's going to be a very technical document, and...
Yeah, we're going to send you one, but it will probably be Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Greg, you sent it to me Friday or Thursday or something. Yeah, I'm having to convert it to a format that complies with our ordinance.
Okay, so we should get it by Wednesday. All right, I just normally get them on Friday, and I wanted to get it a little bit earlier than that, if possible, but.
I didn't get it to Mr. Kendrick in time because I had a meeting on Thursday, so I didn't.
But you normally get Friday before counseling us to get all the ordinance.
Right.
But I'll do it by Wednesday this way.
Okay, that'd be great. Secondly, related to this same item, I know that we've set up a public input page on our website about this. Is there any way, once the ordinance is completed and gotten to us on Wednesday, that we could go ahead and post the ordinance, so people can make sort of meaningful input on, on the changes?
Basically, what I've sent to Mr. Kendrick is, is an adoption of what Vestavia Hills has adopted. We had a meeting Thursday afternoon, which is part of the time drag to see what, I had to know what our final document was going to look like, and the other cities, Trussville, Mountain Brook, I called them all earlier, and I won't be able to forget them, Pleasant Grove, and somebody else was there, Trussville, Mountain Brook, Irondale. They're following along with the Vestavia ordinance also, and so that, there were just very slight changes made, but the whole idea was, we didn't want to have ten different storm ordinance out there for these builders to follow, because they, it'd just be a fiasco. So after we got all that hammered out Thursday evening, that's when I, like I say, time drag, because I didn't want to send it to Mr. Kendrick with something that was just in a million pieces. So, but it's need to be adopted by the end of the month, so as far as input, it has to be quick and have Mr., have you time to review it, and have Mr. Kendrick time to change it if necessary.
Yes, well, ma'am, you recognize.
Yep, please.
Understood, and I'm, I'm not, this is in no way a criticism of the timeline up to this point, but that's part of why I had the sense of urgency that I wanted to get it immediately, which Wednesday is clearly when I'll be able to get it. But secondly, that is why I wanted to go ahead and post it out to the website, because...
Certainly.
It's easy enough for people to make comments on the website that we've created, or the page on our website that we've created, but if they don't have anything to respond to, it doesn't seem like it's a very meaningful opportunity for input. So I'm just asking if Jettie Tripp can put it out there, because they've already got the page, it's just adding a file to the page.
Certainly. I was just stressing that input is great, but we do have a timeframe we have to meet.
I understand, July one, I, I got it.
And, and that time, is that, is that from, the deadline, is that from the legislature, or what, what is that deadline from?
You know, I honestly don't know who created that deadline. It all came to me. It just landed in my lap, I saw it just last week.
There's been drafts been circulated for about six months, that the health department is working on, I think they came and talked to you at one time.
They did.
I've just seen this one, Greg sent it to me.
Right.
I saw an earlier draft that was circulated in January, and made my comments in, but it's what it is, unfortunately.
But...
Yes.
All right.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Sure, but, but, but we do have a deadline of having to approve this by July one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
We have to have some, not this one, we had to have some ordinance in place. If, if Mr. Kendrick sees something in there that he needs to change, then that's what we need to do.
Gotcha, okay. All right, we'll look forward to taking it up and receiving it on Wednesday, perhaps.
There are four ordinances, well, three ordinances you'll be looking at, so it's, it's not something that you can just change the name, unfortunately.
Right, it'll put you to sleep reading it.
Okay.
Don't worry about that. It's, a lot of it has to do with record-keeping on things that, you know, staff has to do.
I know I can speak on behalf of my fellow council members that we can't wait, so. All right, all right, so we have a motion and a second for approval of the referral agenda. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, referral agenda.
Can I get the first and second, please? The big one.
I seconded, yeah, I seconded.
Thank you, guys, I didn't write those down. Mr. Higginbotham and Mrs. Andrus. All right, next item, moving on to other new business, oh seven oh six eighteen, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Special Issues Committee for consideration of a sign variance at seventy-six Green Springs Highway, coming from Elliot DeVore and Greg Cobb, and this is going to be a public hearing I have to set for June twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, at six P.M. We also have, Mike, can you talk to you about these? A request to set a public hearing and referral to the planning, let me give you the number, this is oh nine oh six eighteen, let me start with that one first. Request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration of the rezoning application of Charles Kessler Catgo LLC to rezone eight hundred through eight oh eight Salter Road and eight oh nine Carr Avenue from NPD to PRD, Planned Residential District, to develop twelve-lot subdivision, and that is to be set for a public hearing I have down for July twenty-third.
That's the first time you could...
That's the first time.
Yes, sir.
And with regard to the preliminary development plan, would that be part of the same item, or would that be a separate item?
Under this zoning ordinance, you have to approve the preliminary development plan prior to enacting the ordinance, but the preliminary development plan is Exhibit B to the ordinance, so the ordinance will be tied to that development plan only.
Okay, so it's still...
The answer is, it's, they're coupled together.
But under the same item number?
No, sir, I think they put them under separate item.
Okay, all right, well, then, then, so we'll set that for public hearing, number one, oh nine oh six eighteen, which is for the rezoning application, oh eight oh six eighteen, which is a request to set public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration of the preliminary development plan.
Let me, please interrupt, I apologize.
Yeah, because I'm trying to get...
Eight oh six eighteen is a development plan.
Right.
The preliminary development plan, oh nine oh six eighteen is a rezoning.
Correct.
So technically, we have to approve the planning, the development plan prior to the adoption of rezoning order, although the preliminary plan that you approved will be incorporated to as a condition and restriction on the use of the property in addition to the other provisions of the zoning order.
Okay.
But I've confused everyone about that.
No, I think you've explained, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure, we have, we have two separate items, that's all.
They'll be heard at the same public hearing, the first opportunity you could adopt at a regular meeting would be the twenty-third.
Okay, so we'll set oh eight oh six eighteen, which is a preliminary development plan for public hearing on July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, and oh nine oh six eighteen, also public hearing on July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
And one other correction, I apologize, the addresses are eight hundred, eight oh two, eight oh six, eight oh eight, Salter, and eight oh nine Carr, there's no eight oh four.
All right.
Also, the rezoning application was voted on, I believe, at the May first Planning Commission meeting, it's listed here as June fifth.
Does what?
No, it's June fifth, it was just...
No, no, that was a preliminary development plan. The zoning application was considered at the previous, in the previous month's meeting.
Well, I didn't refer to any zoning in the ordinance, because it just says it's failed to recommend, because it was a three-three vote.
I was just pointing out the date where it was considered.
Okay, that's not in the zoning ordinance, or the notice.
Okay, so with those items, we're looking for public hearings on all those items on, and let me make sure my calendar, you were saying July, I had July twenty-third.
Yes, the second meeting of the month, unless you...
Oh, July, I'm sorry.
So we are July, okay, July twenty-third, all correct, okay. All right, so July twenty-third for those two items. Next item is ten oh six eighteen, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration of condemning a house at the following address, one oh one Ventura Avenue, coming from Wyatt Pugh. We're going to set that for public hearing for July ninth at six P.M. without any objection. And eleven oh six eighteen, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration of condemning a house at twenty-nine hundred sixteenth Place South, which is a detached garage, coming from Wyatt Pugh. We're going to also set that for public hearing on July ninth, two thousand eighteen, without objection. Twelve oh six eighteen, which is a request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration of condemning a house at sixteen oh two Ridge Road, coming from Wyatt Pugh again, and public hearing on that for July ninth, two thousand eighteen, so we've got all that to look forward to. Thirteen oh six eighteen, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration of condemning a house at twenty-eight Edgehill Road, from Wyatt Pugh as well, and public hearing on that will be for July ninth as well. Fourteen oh six eighteen, request to set a public hearing and referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration to adopt changes to the zoning ordinance, coming from the Homewood Planning Commission and Greg Cobb. Now, do we have a, what's the earliest we can do this, Mike? And I don't know if that's what we want to do, but...
Let me say this, I don't know what the changes are, no one sent them to me, but I'd recommend, because of the publication requirement, because it does affect the zoning ordinance, they go to the committee, if you recall, we've had a history of going to committee and have additional changes and have to republish it. So I would recommend that, whatever the changes are, and I don't know them yet, that the committee would look at it and then determine if and what they want to do.
Okay, so really, okay, so without objection...
Send it to the committee.
Uh, this would go to, I guess, would, instead of a public hearing, that we just send this item to Planning and Development Committee? Without objection? Okay, all right.
Otherwise, we have to republish if you make these...
Sure.
...answer change.
We've been down that road before. All right, fifteen oh six eighteen, request for consideration of sub-public hearing to consider declaring the property located at two sixty Oxmore Road a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances nineteen ten and seventeen fifty, excessive growth, and ordinance, number ten ninety-eight for litter, coming from Scott Cook and the code enforcement and the police department, and have this down for public hearing for June twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, without objection. Sixteen oh six eighteen, which is a request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at eighteen forty-nine South Lakeshore Drive a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances nineteen ten and seventeen fifty, excessive growth, also coming to us from Scott Cook, and we'll ask for a public hearing for that on June twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, without objection.
Excuse me, Mr. Rapp, that one we didn't drop.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm so sorry, that is, did I scratch out the wrong one? I did. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to, to drop sixteen oh six eighteen?
Seven.
By Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. Higginbotham, all in favor?
Aye.
So sixteen oh six eighteen stands as drop. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next item, seventeen oh six eighteen, which is a request to authorize the mayor to sign the annual service agreement for the Motorola radio consoles and system upgrade agreement two, coming from Brandon Broadhead and the fire department, and I don't know if there's any discussion or questions about this, but this is obviously renewing an agreement we already have in place with Motorola?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The only proviso is that Motorola was going to provide us with a letter, and it's proprietary software, which I'm sure it is, they couldn't get it here today, so I'd say you adopt it, condition upon us getting that letter, which Mr. Broadhead is working on, not to delay it.
Okay.
I would need to approve, depending on the season of the weather.
All right, move for approval for Mrs. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCluskey. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So seventeen oh six eighteen stands approved, and that's resolution eighteen, I lost track, eighty-one?
Eighty-one.
Thank you.
I think it's eighty-two, let me see.
Let's see that.
Maybe eighty-one, eighty-one.
Eighty-one, okay.
Yes, sir.
Great. Next item, eighteen oh six eighteen, request for consideration to replace a senior planning position grade twenty-six, step ten, with a zoning supervisor position grade twenty-five, step four, coming from Wyatt Pugh and Mayor McBrayer. I don't know if anyone wants, has questions or wants discussion on this?
We have to adopt a resolution.
Yes, I have the resolution here. It will, this will result into substantial savings in his, his salary line.
And that being Mr. Pugh's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, can, can, can someone explain what that change is about that's, that's a savings on a property, if you can?
The, the change in the salary structure?
Well, or, or this request?
What?
Or Mr. Pugh? Yeah.
This is to replace the position that was held by Vanessa McGrath, who's now left. The position that she held was senior planner, and if you look at the job description of that, it's, it's kind of off-center from what she actually did in going through and taking a look at some, some different job descriptions. This zoning supervisor seems to be a lot more targeted to what she did and what we need, and it is actually a step, a step lower, so, a grade lower, excuse me, but that, that's the only reason for wanting to change the title from senior planner to zoning supervisor. It's just a better fit.
And it's actually in a, in a, in a lower-budget item?
It's a lower-budget item, yes, sir.
Okay.
Technically, we don't have that job classification from City Homewood, and that's what Chris does, personal board, he creates that job category.
Okay. All right, any further questions or discussion? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Mr. McCluskey, I'll go second to Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that stands approved, and that's going to be resolution eighteen eighty-two. All right, next item, nineteen oh six eighteen, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, through June tenth, two thousand eighteen, and I'm not sure who had the honors, Mr. Higginbotham, please.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reviewed those this weekend, and Robert was kind enough to answer a couple of questions I have, so I would move approval of the item.
All right, so I'll take that motion for approval from Mr. Higginbotham. Any questions or a second?
Second.
By Mr. Thames, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that stands approved, eighteen eighty-three. Next item, twenty oh six eighteen, request to amend the fiscal year seventeen eighteen insurance fund budget, and Robert, this is coming through you, I don't know if you can explain what this amendment's about.
This is not a, a request for new money, this is a request to purchase a new police Tahoe before we receive our insurance proceeds. They've asked for a PO, we can't issue a PO, there's no money in the lineup, so we're transferring money from insurance proceeds to police property damage, and then when the when the proceeds come, if an issue comes, we'll replace the money back to insurance proceeds.
And do you know when, when we may expect those, uh, insurance funds?
Can I talk to Mr. Zemag and the name of the company that's in action?
Oh, okay.
In terms of their subletting with the light that gave, so they should have all the proceeds, they're in front, and they get them.
Okay.
I believe that, um, one of the reasons they're trying to do this quickly is because there is a police Tahoe on the ground of Donnie Chevrolet now that they can purchase, as opposed to have to order one and wait six to eight weeks for it to come in.
Gotcha, okay. All right, any further questions or discussion? Entertaining a motion for approval? By Mr. Wyatt, I'll give a second to Mr. McCluskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so it's, item twenty oh six eighteen is approved, resolution eighteen eighty-four. Gets us to our last item, which is item twenty-one oh six eighteen, which is a request for the mayor to execute a contract for a Patriot Park Connector project, coming to us from Mr. Hickonbotham, if you can, or, Mr.?
I can tell you what it is.
Okay, all right, if you want to...
Mr. Cobb actually asked me to add it to the agenda. This is to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Kelly Landscape. We've already approved money for this item, we just haven't authorized him to sign a contract with anybody, and, um, Mr. Cobb asked me to add it to the agenda.
Great, all right, any questions? Entertaining a motion for approval?
Some.
By Mr. Hickonbotham. Second by Mr. McCluskey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that stands approved as well. I'm not sure if that's a resolution or not, Mike.
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, it'll be resolution eighteen eighty-five. Okay, that gets us through our agenda and over to our comments announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good job tonight. And I was just wondering earlier if Mr. Kendrick has any idea how many times he has recited an ordinance erecting a stop sign? He can do it by, he has the paper in front of him, but he doesn't have to read it, he's read it so many times.
They've got to keep the streets, streets straight though.
Street straight. Couple of things, um, Ms. Andrews has been on me about the Homewood Beautification Board, so we have, um, a lot of people, and I'll name those individuals, um, tonight, to the Homewood Beautification Board, and I believe their first meeting's going to be tomorrow night. Where's the...
I think we're right here.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the list of names that have, uh, been submitted and that I've appointed is Lars Stansel, Katie Cannon, Roxanne Batson, Melinda Underwood, Nancy Walburn, Tiffany Sides, Gloria White, Fondashaia, Meredith Wolfe, Captain Ben Sutton, uh, Councilwoman Jennifer Andrews, Barry Hill, and Meredith Drennan. Did that get them all?
I think so.
All right, perfect. Anyone that has any further interest on serving, um, on the Homewood Beautification Board can certainly contact Jennifer, and she'll get the names, uh, to me. Just one other thing that I wanted to, um, announce, and it's, we've actually had a lot of press about, um, the four over-the-mountain mayors, uh, last year, um, basically created a Freedom From Addiction Coalition. In talking about things that, um, was affecting our cities that really nobody wanted to talk about, it's the main issue that kept coming up, and there's so many families that are affected, um, by this particular issue, so, um, we have all agreed that, uh, every three months that we host a breakfast, Vestavia did the first one, um, about three months ago, and it was just a huge success, hundreds of people came, uh, parents of, um, a young lady who ultimately lost her life, um, was the speaker. So tomorrow's breakfast, uh, will be held at Canterbury United Methodist Church, it'll be from eight until nine, it's free to the public, uh, and then, and Richard Simmons the third, who I think probably all of you know, Richard's going to be the speaker in the morning. Breakfast is at seven thirty, and it's, it's really just, um, a way to offer help to the community, to get people talking about, um, what families can do to help those in need. Instead of being quiet about it, instead of being ashamed of it, um, getting the help, because the ultimate goal is to help save people's lives. So, um, Mountain Brooks, uh, hosting it in the morning, love for you to come if you get a chance, it really do try to hold it to about an hour, um, and then I think Hoover will be the next, and then Homewood will, will, will do it in another three months, so, we'll get the dates out, but again, in the morning, eight to nine, Canterbury United Methodist Breakfast at seven thirty, uh, free to the public, and Richard will be the speaker. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Waltney?
Uh, only one comment this evening, uh, I just wanted to applaud Ward Two and all the folks in the neighborhood that put together the Patriot Park Street Fest last Saturday, it was a good time, hope that all...
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Thames?
Mr. Jones, are you, you have five o'clock?
Yes, sir.
How long do you think you'll need?
Uh, thirty minutes.
Okay. I will set P and D, uh, for five-thirty then, and I'll, a lot of referrals and some of them are going to be intense, so I will take all thirty minutes as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickonbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and thank you, Mr. Waltney, for your, your kind remarks. I can take absolutely no credit for the Street Fest.
Take all the credit.
I was nothing but a participant in the Street Fest, and it was a fantastic evening, and I applaud all those who, who organized that and, um, supported the efforts. It was, it was a great time, a lot of fun and food and good music, and, uh, even had some of our local talent on display, a young lady was allowed to, to sing, who was just, stellar, just dynamite, we were there when she, just an incredible voice, um, that was an unexpected treat that, that did occur. Quick clarification, are the, are the Ward One library interviews tomorrow night? And that's five, and five, five, six P.M., and so when is the Beautification Board?
Oh, we're meeting at six.
Okay, so it's just not going back, okay.
Is that right, Robert, are we, the Beautification Board, we're meeting at six, are we right here?
Let me check my sheet.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was not in the same room at the same time, that was what I was... I'll just let you know, I'll have that on here, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to send you an email?
I'll bring it over tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
Only other observation I was, well, actually two more observations, uh, the, the groundbreaking for the new Public Safety Center was a fantastic, exciting, uh, thing to, to be present for, humbling because the ground was extraordinarily hard and difficult to shovel, but, um, it's just, I know that people, many, many people, before, before I, or a lot of the folks on this council were here, have been talking about this, and just to see it come to fruition like this is, is fantastic, and I know everybody's very excited about it. Uh, but the last observation I was going to make was just, tomorrow night is the West Homewood Farmers Market from five to eight, and we'd invite everybody out, uh, good food and good times, and, um, I've got an HEC meeting, and I'm planning to try to attend your Ward One interviews, and I guess maybe I'll try to go to Beautification Board too.
That'd be great, yeah.
I probably won't be there, but I hope you get out and get some good food and music, um, with Motel Ice Machine as the music at the West Homewood Farmers Market tomorrow night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McCluskey?
Um, yes, I'll set, uh, Public Safety for six o'clock, and, uh, Mrs. Smith, I'll only need thirty minutes, I think. Thirty minutes, yeah. Um, and I was also, uh, privileged to, uh, be a part of the, the groundbreaking ceremony. Uh, I know we're all, it's been a long time coming and we're all excited, uh, so it's a great thing to look forward to, and, uh, great to see the, the community rally around that, so, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
And I apologize, uh, I was in DC during the groundbreaking, so I was in the middle of the, the Capitol celebration chaos, so that, that was a lot of fun. Congratulations to them, and, uh, but it, it, it has been a long time coming, because I, I do remember so many years ago that we saw the rendering, and it just seemed like it, we never could get it moving, but I'm, I'm so excited that we're to that point now that it, it's, it's going to come to fruition, so, thank you for putting your shovel in the hard dirt there to get it started. So that's great. And then the, uh, the other thing I want to mention is, um, I put on the agenda, um, for, to, to look at the gateways within the city. So, um, if you look at the, the gateway, uh, for instance, uh, on Rosedale Drive going into Eighteenth Street, you know, that was originally brought to us by the Beautification Committee.
That's right, yeah.
So they looked at all the gateways, so, maybe that might be the first item of, of, of business within the Beautification Committee is to look at gateways, because I have a lot of ideas that I have, you know, such as behind Publix, you know, and I've talked to Mr. Cobb about that, making that, you know, a gateway to the Edgewood Neighborhood, you know, and have, and have like a nice gateway wherever, so I want everybody on the council to be thinking about where in the city could we have a nice, you know, a small, it doesn't have to be a huge gateway, but that's really what the Beautification Committee used to bring to us, and we had The Rock, and it was consistent, um, so, I, I'm excited about that, you know, kind of looking at, at all those, so if we can think about maybe entrances that we haven't thought about, you know, there are a lot of entrances to the city, unfortunately, you don't ever know when you sometimes leave and, and come into Homewood, so, uh, just be thinking about that, so, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mrs. Smith?
Um, I'll set, set special issues for six-thirty, and, do you have public works? I think you do.
I do.
Okay, um, I think I only have three items, so, I'm going to be bold and say fifteen.
Okay, well, then I will unofficially perform my time, set public works at six forty-five.
Okay. Um, and, and just as everyone else said, that the groundbreaking was a lot of fun, and I'm just so excited for our police, um, our police department, uh, for them to have a place where they'll all be together and, and, under the same roof, and in such a fantastic facility, um, it's just really exciting to be a part of, I'm really excited to be out there, although the shoveling was difficult. Agreed.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Uh, I'm just happy to be back, um, while I was dealing with my day job, and appreciate everyone, uh, filling in, especially Miss Smith answering, uh, just about every email and text and everything else, uh, while she was letting me do my day job, so, I appreciate it and I'm happy to be back.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Andrews?
We are happy to have him back. It's been a while. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that. Melinda Underwood, who's going to be chairing this board, asked me specifically if, you know, any of you guys or Mr. Mayor, if y'all had any, um, any direction, you know, anything that you wanted to, to give to them. I think we're going to start with holiday decorations, that's why we all came together initially to begin with, and, um, but gateways, that, that is correct, that was from them when they existed originally, and that's great, and I will definitely start with that tomorrow, uh, so I appreciate that, so if anybody else has anything they want to send our way, that'd be great. Um, and then also, I know the groundbreaking, everybody, it was great, um, I just can't, I, I just cannot stop thinking about that morning when Mr. Waltney and Mr. Hickonbotham and I went on that tour of the building, and I just couldn't believe, you know, just, I hate to say working conditions, but, I mean, it was just like, you just, the, I was just so excited for them to have sunlight coming through their windows and [laugh] space and, you know, an evidence room that's not crammed, and that's going to be great, so, um, was happy to be a part of that, so. That's it for me.
Thank you so much, and, so we'll set public works for six forty-five, since I don't see any other times available. And I did, um, I, I really did hate to, I did have a hearing, uh, because I really had planned, really wanted to get out there for the groundbreaking, that is just, it's a big, big moment for our city, and, and the mayor and so many people need to be commended for it, and this council, and it's going to be quite exciting, and, and not only the newness and everything being together, but also, uh, the new location, new life out there, frankly, new life where the old location is, and, um, and, and dealing with those issues as well, it's, I mean, we're killing about six birds with one stone, so, uh, it's really going to be a, a great project, and just, just so excited about it, and along with all the other, other projects that are underway, but, all right, with that, I won't belabor, um, we will stand adjourned, and see you guys in the committees next Monday night.